Councilmember Nordby is absent. Councilmember Woods?
Here.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Here.
Councilmember Schwerz absent. Mayor Muggie?
Here. Thank you very much. Can I please get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember McKenzie?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Woods, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just hoping you were gonna say it, 'cause we'd be in trouble if you didn't. Alright, we're ready.
Thank you, Mayor. So this evening, we've got one topic on the agenda, and it is the Management Action Plan. So we get together every year, January, February. We have time for councils to establish goals and priorities for the year, and just kind of lay them out on where you guys are at and where you want us to put our priorities. It's been a busy year. We've had, there was a lot on the list, and a lot has been accomplished. So that's what we're going through tonight. Mr. Winnick, our Finance Director, is our emcee for this evening, so I'm gonna turn it over to Dan.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, thank you very much. As you can see, we have a cast of characters, our department heads. This is what really makes our organization very successful on a day-in, day-out basis. So we have Ken, who is our Community Development Director. We have Jason, our Fire Chief. We have Ray, our Police Chief. We have John, our Electric Director. And we have Ron, our Public Works Director. We had the privilege this year, oh, and myself. We had the privilege this year to join the City Council and the City Manager for the retreat. And I think it was the first time that the directors had attended that. And I thought it was very meaningful. I think one of the big walkaways that I personally had from the whole entire, you know, evening, was that we both come at it from a different perspective. You're looking at things in a much higher global, citywide viewpoint, where we look at things much more on a day-to-day organizational and how do we accomplish certain things. And I think that there was an example that that dialogue became very, very clear. And I think that's what's important about having the department heads at those retreats. And then tonight, to do a follow-up, so we can share what we've done, and then have you ask some additional questions, kind of gives us that vision and that leadership that we need for the remainder of the year, and then as we move into 2026. But the dialogue took places where we rated different priorities and initiatives. And I think we had, there was like five or six staff members had voted for a certain item. And there wasn't one City Council member that voted for it. And one of the City Council members had said, "Well, I wanna look at this. Why was there such a big difference?" And it was moving towards a more electronic security for the doors in our facilities. And the question was asked, and we had two individuals, or Jason, our Fire Chief, and Ron, our Public Works Director, who spent a lot of time with vendors and looking at different options, explain what the needs were. And by the end of the dialogue, City Council was very supportive of the city moving forward with that initiative, in which we have moved forward, and we'll hear more about that. But to me, that was a clear example of the different sides that were looking at things. You're looking at so many different dynamic components of what's happening in the city. Not that the staff doesn't and isn't aware of those, but we're also looking at things more on a, you know, the day-to-day type of basis to it. And I think that one just gave kind of a clear example of that. So we've thrown together kind of just a PowerPoint presentation where we kind of just, we'll just kind of quickly look at, from that workshop, what the 2025, 26 goals were, the priorities, and then the Management Action Plan in the discussion. What I'm really hoping for tonight is that we don't have to go down through every single piece. We don't have to point out to a department head and say, "Hey, what did you do here? What did you do there?" Really want this to be an interactive, just like our retreat was, where there's a lot of questions from City Council to staff, and staff engaging back with the City Council. I think this is a dynamic relationship that has been developed, that was greatly enhanced by that retreat earlier in the year, and I think we need to continue that. And so I don't, I want this to be just free-flow it, because that's really where I think staff, department heads, really get the value of what the direction that City Council is looking for. So we had goals. We had a number of, we had, I think, seven different categories. One was the infrastructure and public safety. And there were a number of items in the goals that were listed, from improving roads and utilities to evaluating contracted fire services and adding an Assistant Fire Chief. There was, category two was economic development and business growth. Three was financial stability and cost management. Four was community facilities and public spaces. Five was workforce and organizational development. Six was sustainability and future planning. And seven was service quality and community engagement. With those, there were a number of priorities and initiatives that were identified, from A to U, and U was other. And that's where our facilitator had requested that staff vote on these different components in City Council. And then the results kind of spearheaded what was the number one, two, three, and four. And so the number one, that was as an outcome of that, with six staff and three City Council members, was finalize the community center resolution, followed by, if I can find, number two was invest in downtown development and road improvements. Three was complete past projects, including the water tower. Four was apply for more grants. Five was provide competitive pay and benefits to reduce turnover. And I think six was develop strategies to attract and retain staff. This is kind of the ranking summary of what came out of that day and other actions that were requested or recommended from the outcome. And then from there, we've developed a Management Action Plan underneath those seven goals. And so we'll take a look at that, the Management Action Plan, goal number one, infrastructure and public safety. And we've listed, I think we've got a total of five items that are underneath this category. And so we can, you know, we can go and have each department head talk about them. Or City Council can ask some questions regarding it. I'll start it off by just saying, the first one is priority and initiatives, is complete past projects, including the water tower. Department head's staff response was completed the feeder relocation along 17th Avenue from Delaware to Helen. Certain equipment still has longer lead times, so must be accounted for in planning. Relocated more overhead to underground. That was from our Electric Director, John. Another one is water tower, tower's design is complete and final planning will begin in 2028 with construction scheduled in 2029 in this Public Works. Now, I can go down the whole entire list, or we can have City Council, you know, start opening up a dialogue on a particular item.
Let me just go down the list.
Go down the list?
Yeah.
Okay. The next priority initiative was invest in the downtown development and road improvements, pavement management program. We have electric fund was utilized to kickstart the pavement preservation program. Then we developed a tenure street plan, major reconstruction in odd years and pavement preservation in even years. And as you're aware, we bonded this year, which we're doing the even, or the odd year. And then we're, City Council recently just had approved the second phase with WSB for next year's pavement preservation program. Then there's move city buildings to a remote keyless card access system. And that was the discussion that I was talking about earlier. No City Council members had voted for it, but staff had, but then when we had that discussion. So their company has been, yep.
I also think, described it perfectly, 'cause we're on the board. We don't get down. So as far as checking that stuff, but just having it brought up and how much time it took to change from somebody left, the codes for going through each door, and, you know, it really, we had no idea. All of a sudden, it's really, you know, we understand the manpower and what it takes. So it was good that we had the group with us. I think having the lead, the heads of departments with us during this part is great, and I hope it continues, because it brings a lot of, lot of information that we might not get, having them with us, so.
Absolutely agree. A vendor has been chosen. It was awarded by City Council. Jason, John, or Ron, do you want to give any update on when that's scheduled? Jason?
Yeah, at this point, it was a few weeks ago, we met with John, who's the Vice President of Electoral Lauchman. That's the company that's going to be doing the work. We're out here moving some, some of the doors and continued work that Randy and Ron have been working on, the contractor to change a couple of things. But we're expecting in the next couple of weeks, a few of his guys to be here to start funding the wires. So the voltage wiring for it, so we don't expect to start seeing any of the heavy labor if you know, that's starting to run up the back.
There we go.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
From the booth that.
Did you hear anything I said?
We did.
Okay.
People at home didn't.
Copy that. So at this point, like I said, it'll be a few weeks, they'll be out here running wires. And shortly thereafter, additional staff to come in. And it would take approximately a month and a half to two months. So they're, they're hoping at this point that it would be completed by the end of the year. Any other questions?
I guess one question I had is, in addition to just pure replacement of the punch code access system that we have, what other improvements are gonna be a part of that implementation?
Yeah, so primarily, number one was having exterior secured access all the way around the building with every service door, making sure that with this new system, we were, like we were talking about previously, that timing is key to be able to have somebody come and go, and to be able to do that quickly. But along with this system, we're adding in the, the main front door. At this point, is, is key only. So that's gonna be added to the system where it's gonna be on, on the keyless system. And staff will be able to enter times for, obviously, it's gonna create a little more work, but a little more control of when the door unlocks and locks in the evenings and daytimes. Also, on the front staff, we're adding safety-type buttons, if you will. So if they needed to go into basically a lockdown-type mode, that will tie in and notify our PD of what's going on, and secure doors so that only certain people that are programmed in this, to the system can come and go, much like the PD. And then additionally, with that as well, the potential for, I believe, in finance and in the community development to kind of have an automatic opening-type system. So if a delivery's coming in, they can press a button to allow somebody to come and go.
Is there a timeline on how long this is gonna take?
Roughly a month and a half to two months.
I think one other thing they're looking at too, is we're looking at adding a door in the hallway over here, just to have kind of a secure area. If something ever went down here, Council could go at this door, that would be secured. And it's just gonna kind of block off this back area, the meeting room back here.
Okay.
Just from the public.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on the keyless entry?
Some of this was cloud-based, correct?
We had the option of a cloud-based server or an actual server in our storage room. And the cost was more cost-efficient to have the server and in our own facility.
Awesome. Thank you.
And we did, also, this company works with Metro Inet quite a bit. That was another big factor in communicating with Metro Inet, is that they were comfortable with their system and what they were using and the safety of their type of servers and system.
Awesome. Thank you.
And then we have de-shift code enforcement from reactive to proactive. I think there's been two workshop items where code compliance underneath the direction of Jason, the Fire Chief, has talked to City Council about some of the code compliance issues and, and the path that they're moving forward. And then in addition, we have that, you know, that electric assist in the code enforcement on electrical issues. And I'll kind of turn that over to John to kind of talk a little bit about their efforts that they do on that, on that side of electric, since we haven't really ever heard from, from the electric side on the code compliance piece to it.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so it's not terribly common that we have to come in that often, but when we do, it's usually because somebody's, you know, breaking a code in the electrical code. And we're, we deal with, directly with the inspectors. We bring them in. We'll go over, you know, properties, problem properties with the Fire Department and Rum River, just to kind of see if there's anything that we notice that's out of place or needs to be improved. I know the most recent example to me, we had resident with solar that was not registered solar. And there's a, there's quite a risk to the utility when that hasn't gone through the proper interconnection application process, just with the back feed potential. And, you know, an outage, we could have power back onto our high-voltage lines. So it's definitely, we've built a good relationship. Obviously, Jason and his team is great. But also with the Electrical Inspector, Chris Cowles, and, well, with Rum River as well. I'm still pretty new to dealing with them, but yeah, it's been good so far.
Could I have you expand on where we stop and where the homeowner starts and their responsibilities?
Sure. Yeah. So, you know, I, I think I've shown the illustration before, but it's a good thing, we, we show it to residents all the time, just because there's a common misconception that, you know, we take care of everything all the way up to the outlet in their home. But really, realistically, we own the, what's on the utility poles, the service to the home. And then if it's an overhead service, there's a masked pipe that sticks up. We don't own that or the wires in it. We just own the meter that's within the socket on the side of the home. And then when it goes to an underground service, we own the wire all the way up to the meter, the top side of the meter, and the meter itself, but not the socket. You know, we can usually take care of a lot of issues for people in just those realms, but oftentimes, we have to turn it over to, an electrician has to take care of it. And sometimes it gets to the point where it's dangerous to even leave it energized, and we have to intervene.
So did this homeowner not pull a permit to install this?
It was a combination of many things, but the first red flag was just that we didn't have an interconnection application. So we don't know if they have the proper, like, transfer switch, basically. So it'll isolate their home from the utility in the event of an outage. We were able to go in and inspect. It's very hard to tell when someone does their own work, what's actually going on. So that's why it's nice to get the actual electrical. own work, um, what's actually going on, so that's why it's nice to get the actual electrical inspector involved, um, and they're usually very responsive and, uh, within, within a day they're out there or have gotten back to us, so.
Was the resident, uh, allowing the, the inspector to go in?
Yeah.
Or was he fighting it?
Uh, I mean, I think it was, it wasn't, um, like, pleasant or anything, but it, uh, everything was allowed to happen and eventually he took the solar panels down.
Oh, he did, okay.
And the next item that we have is update city codes for clarity and effectiveness, and I know that I've, I've seen a, a number of times where even this year, um, in a short period of time that Ken has been with us, that he has already brought a number of items for city councils review and approval, um, where there's been, you know, uh, obviously reviewed and then trying to simplify some of the codes and, and make them more uniform. Ken, would you care to elaborate a little bit more on, on your efforts that you've made to date?
Thank you, Dan. Is that on? Okay. Yes, and thank you, council, and it's already been six months, but who's counting? Yes, that, one of the things I was told early on is this was a goal for the city and had have had a lot of help from both staff and the planning commission on the parts of the codes that are, were most troublesome, shall we say, or needing the most attention, and those are the ones that we brought forward to you so far, and we continue to identify more things that definitely should be brought up to date. We find codes from 1989, for example, we found one that talks about taxi cabs. I don't think we have taxi cabs or license them, that'll be another example, we'll be bringing forward hopefully by the end of the year. So we continue to look for those, find those, sometimes we get hints and directions, sometimes we just, for better or for worse, luck upon them and say, wait a minute, this isn't so good. So yes, uh, so far, so good.
Ken, I, um, because I'm the liaison for the planning commission, I, I'm, um, enjoying a firsthand view of the work you do, and I, your attention to detail is wonderful, and I can't thank you enough for the good job you're doing.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to, uh, goal number two, economic development and business growth, um, and one of the priorities was modernize the area to attract families, and, uh, you know, there's been some accomplishments both with Article Seven and Sentinel Building, increasing the density, density in the downtown area, and then there's also, uh, a facade improvement program, uh, that's been developed and implemented, um, in the city, um, it's in place and it's ongoing, um, and I'm going to have Ken talk a little bit about that program, um, if, if not everybody is aware of it, I know we have at least, is there at least one EDA member, uh, but, Ken?
Yeah, thank you, Dan. Uh, it's a, the facade improvement program is a loan program for up to, I think, fifty percent of certain facade improvements in the downtown buildings. Typically, we've seen this year, what in my time, uh, the replacements of doors and windows that are maybe forty, fifty or more years old to put in new, uh, entry systems with better glass, better windows or better doors. They look similar, but they're much more energy efficient, and then they modernize the entrances. The program also would work with, if, for example, there was brick on a building in the downtown that needed tuck pointing or repair, that might be an eligible, uh, request that could be made. If somebody wants to even restore, maybe take down some old wooden or vinyl siding, if there's brick underneath, that might be an option to restore a building back. Those are the kind of things to, again, both restore and just maintain the downtown buildings, so they're the primary, uh, reasons for the program.
Have we had widespread adoption of those funds up by the businesses?
What was the question?
Have we had a lot of adoption? I mean, have we had a lot of people taking advantage of?
We've had two businesses that have taken advantage of it and done the work, um, we've had talk of another one coming, so, um, yeah, it's, the word's getting out there.
Okay.
As a joint effort too, it's fifty percent, so they want to, they have to have some initiative in it too, so.
Yep.
Some of them are interested, so it's cool.
Yep, exactly.
And goal number three, financial stability and cost management, um, uh, we're currently reviewing and optimize, um, the garbage contract, uh, right now we're in the process of developing the RFP, um, we hope to have that in front of city council and then issued by the end of the year. So, uh, more to come on that one, it'll be brought in front of the, the city council. Applying for, uh, more grants, um, that we're in year two of the EAB grant, which was for a total of four hundred thousand dollars, one hundred thousand dollars for the residents, three hundred thousand dollars for the city, um, and we'll get back to, to these in just a second. Um, and then we have the police collaboration with Ramsey County, St. Paul and BCA on grant opportunities, and then the inflow and infiltration grant. So I'm going to ask Ron to kind of touch base on the EAB and the inflow infiltration grant, um, and then to have Ray kind of talk about this collaboration with Ramsey County, St. Paul and BCA, because he's done an extensive, uh, work with them and, and building that relationship, um, and so I really think it's something very positive that city council needs to, to hear about, so, start off with, uh, Ron, if you don't mind, and then we'll turn it over to Ray.
Uh, the EAB grant, um, that, like, Dan said, the hundred thousand dollars for the private residents, that was, we used up that in the first year, um, for the residents, um, and then that left us three hundred thousand, and I, I believe, I don't know where the exact number is for this year, but I think we're pretty close to having used up, um, the rest of the money, um, for the boulevard trees. Uh, one thing that kind of, um, the information that we got, uh, we, they said we didn't have to replace the trees in the residents' yards, we don't, we don't have to actually put them in the yards, but we actually have to replace the trees in the city. So, I know Josh was working with some of the people, if they wanted them, we'd, we'd put them there, if not, we'd put, put them somewhere like in a park. But, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact number where we're at with the grant this year, but I think we're getting down pretty close, um, to having used all those funds. It's a lot of extra work that, them grants, just, uh, they come out and they do inspections for every, um, tree that's removed, trees that are replanted, uh, the stumps that are removed, um, to, like, last year, they came out and did their inspections, and there was one, one stump that wasn't removed, so they took, uh, a hundred and eighty dollars back from us, or they weren't refunding us for that until that stump got removed. So, we have to really dot our i's and cross our t's with that stuff, so, um, it's a lot of work, but it's also a lot of money, and it's really helping us with, you know, where we're at in removing these trees. And then I'll just touch on the, the inflow infiltration grant, that's, that.
Hey, Ron, could you expand on, where do you get on the removals and what kind of timeframe are you still looking at? We get a lot of reports of dead trees over the roads and, you know, people get concerns and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, um, I believe, and don't quote me exactly on these numbers, I haven't touched base, I should have touched base with Josh today, today on it, but, um, I, I believe we're down to about two hundred and, two hundred-ish, two hundred and fifty-ish trees, somewhere right around there, is that, that's what we have left to remove. We usually remove about a hundred and twenty trees ourselves, and then the grant with, with the help of the grant with the contractors, that, that was about, depending on how many there were, normally about fifty, um, on top of that. So, we're hoping, I think in the next couple of years, that we'll have all the, the ash trees, um, removed from, from the town, and it was a ten-year plan, um, I believe we're, we're, we're ahead of schedule on the ten-year plan because the help of the grant, I'm, I'm not going to give you the exact numbers here, because I don't have that.
We had a mild winter last year, so we were able to do more too.
Yep, the, the grant really helped us out, but, you know, with this, when we, it's, when we're removing these trees, um, the trees have to be replaced, so, this is, you know, a tree gets removed, the stump gets ground, all this, and then we have to do the restoration for that, and then we have to buy new trees, the new trees got to be replaced, planted, and then we got to water those trees, you'll see trees with the bag around them, um, that's for water, you know, keeping them watered, so, um, there's a lot, you know, you just can't go, hey, you know, we got a price for a thousand dollars to remove a tree, and we have three hundred thousand dollars, we should be able to remove three hundred trees, you know, there's a lot more that goes into each one where we got to replace these trees as part of that grant, so.
How long, you say the bag on there, how long does the city do that before the, the, um, homeowners expect it to take over, is there, is it right away, is it?
Um, I asked Josh this question, and I think I answered, I think you asked me that question and I got that answer from Josh, and I can't remember.
Okay.
What, what it is. I'll, I'll get back to you.
That's fine.
I'll, I'll check with, I'll check with him, I don't want to tell you something on, people are listening, so.
Is there still a grant available to continue this?
Um, there is, I, I believe something just came out, again, it's the same type of grant, um, Josh was, uh, looking it over, and we were going to talk about it and see if, I mean, I don't know if it's this kind of money again, um, I don't know the details, but it was just like, a, a week or two ago, we, we had talked about this, so.
Can I add that, uh, so your guys' bucket truck is looking to be replaced, um, so you might be holding on to that second one at least for a little bit to help removal?
So, yes, thank, thanks for that, Brian, um, yes, we, um, we ordered a new bucket truck, it was ordered, uh, a few months ago, um, it's, uh, we, we should take delivery on it here shortly, and before we go and sell our other bucket truck, um, we are going to keep that through the winter so we can have two crews out trimming, so, um, the new bucket truck we got is a lot taller one, so we can get at some of the bigger trees, taller trees, um, but that is kind of the plan right now, if, knock on wood, if we have mild winter again, we have some extra time, um, so we're kind of making that as part of the plan to get two crews out, uh, so hopefully we can maybe, you know, get even more ahead of where we're at, but it's all weather dependent, but that's kind of the, the plan right now. Yeah, and then, any more questions on the tree stuff? Um, inflow infiltration grant, um, that is a grant that comes out from the Met Council, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong on these numbers, I, I, I believe it's forty thousand dollars we get, or forty-five thousand dollars we get, the Met Council offers that to pretty much all the cities that are associated with them, um, and what that is for is for people that have, uh, your sewer lines that have cracks in them or their old clay and water gets in, in those, because, you know, all of our sewage is metered going out of town, so any rainwater or anything that gets in to the sanitary sewer system, we basically pay to get rid of that, um, sewage, so, we've done this for the last two years, uh, the grants used up this year, it's up to, it's basically half the cost, up to five thousand dollars for someone that, um, you know, wants, or comes across a sewer problem, um, and the, like I said, we've done that for the last two years, and I believe it's forty or forty-five thousand dollars, so some residents benefit, you know, from that, um, and it's kind of nice if we're out and we're talking to someone or they're having a sewer problem, we inspect everything on our side, um, they have a contractor come out, look at it, we can say, hey, we have this grant, you can, you know, apply for it, you know, when the money's out there, so it's been a very positive thing, and it's kind of a, a nice thing that we can at least have some good news for, uh, a resident, you know, because, you know, the residents own their sewer line from, you know, in their house all the way out to the, to the main, and the same with their water line, um, so it's, it's kind of a nice thing, uh, if residents can take advantage of that.
Thank you.
Ray?
Hello, council, thank you. Uh, just wanted to touch on, uh, one of the partnership grants that we partnered with, uh, White Bear Lake and Ramsey County Sheriff's Office, has Ramsey County Sheriff's Office, um, approached us along with White Bear Lake in an automobile theft prevention grant? Basically, um, they do all the legwork for us, um, and we, uh, get their resources as part of the grant, and anytime we put in with our officers, our investigations unit towards automobile theft cases, uh, we receive reimbursement for their training, um, for their time, and not only that, but if we need, if our case, uh, is bigger than what we can take on, we can utilize two of their investigators, uh, we can utilize their drones, we also acquired two flock cameras out of this grant, which will be going up in, uh, um, two areas of North St. Paul, um, White Bear Lake also acquired flock cameras, so, um, with their flock cameras, Ramsey County's flock cameras and our flock cameras, we all can tap into each other's cameras system, um, so wherever Ramsey County has theirs, uh, we can see what's going on in their world and they can see what's going on in our world, um, you know, in the event we have a case or an incident that happens in our city, um, and then it bleeds into, uh, you know, St. Paul or South Metro, um, or White Bear Lake, uh, we can utilize those cameras to help the solvability of that case, so, um, resources that are very beneficial and bring up stats, um, in solvability, which is what we need. Deployment of these six, eight, uh, LPR cameras, which are going to be, um, license plate reader cameras, so not only can we see what's going on, but if there's vehicles involved in those, um, frames, we can capture their, uh, their license plates too. Hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in annual overtime funding, um, this is big because a lot of cases, um, that are of ex, of significance, especially heinous crime cases, are, they're going to eat up our detectives' time, um, so getting reimbursed for that overtime is going to be very beneficial for us. We also, um, we also have a partnership with the Ramsey County Traffic Safety Initiative, uh, so Toward Zero Death, um, it's a grant-funded, um, uh, partnership where any of our officers that are trained and meet a criteria to TZD standards, they can participate in details like, uh, um, seatbelt waves, DWI waves, um, um, electronic use waves, not only can they go out to these other cities and participate in their details, but we also host these details, so anytime we do, we can bring in everyone from the county that is a partner in this, um, so not only would it be North St. Paul officers working our streets, um, it would be St. Paul PD, it would be White Bear Lake, it would be Mounds View, um, any of the Ramsey County partners that are part of TZD. So, it's great for us when we have, especially when we're three square miles, uh, and we have, we host one of these events because we end up with twenty to thirty squads in our city that are basically on every street, uh, for a period of time throughout that detail, so for several hours, um, it is a very nice, uh, uh, detail. So those, those two, those two grants basically are the most recent ones that we, um, partnered with and are going to be huge, um, I, I, I think the, the Ramsey County partnership with this investigation for auto theft is going to be a big one, we've had a, over the last several months, we've had a rash of auto thefts, not only in a, not in just one particular area of the city, but it, just all over the city, so, being able to have our investigators now do extra work, um, outside of their normal hours, meaning do some undercover work, um, and bring in two investigators from Ramsey County, uh, under this grant is going to be huge for us, so. Anything else?
Is there anybody of your officers actually doing the TZD right now?
We are just about, we literally just signed all of our paperwork, so we're just getting going, we have two of our officers right now at the TZD conference, uh, down in Prior, I think it's in Prior Lake, um, so when they come back, we'll be ready to rip and roar, and we have several officers that are, um, they're, they're qualified to take on the TZD details right now, so, and we have several more officers that are interested in taking on, uh, the overtime for that too, so, the more the merrier that we can get involved with, with that program.
Chief, is, is there anything we can do as a city to make collaboration easier and or better for you across the street with Washington County, because it's just across the street, or is that, is that just a dead?
That's a, that's a great question, I think if we were to acquire a grant writer, um, it would build mountains for us, uh, we don't have a grant writer right now, and writing grants is very time-consuming, and, so if we were to have somebody come in like that and could write us up, uh, those grants, it would be huge, and a lot of those grants are like these, where we partner with neighboring agencies. are like these where we partner with neighboring agencies. Um, because, uh, Ramsey County has been a big supporter of us, um, in a lot of our grants. Um, and typically if we, if we are going to partner, it's going to be with White Bear Lake, Mountain View, Maplewood, um, Roseville. Um, but it would be great to partner with neighboring counties. So yeah, a grant writer would be very beneficial.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question on, on either for Ron or for Ray?
Yeah. Uh, how's the partnership with BCA going and how long? How much longer do we, are we sharing?
Great question. Um, the partnership is wonderful. Um, we've utilized, uh, Freddie's teams multiple times since he's been on it. Um, the, the, the agreement right now is tech, technically going to be up next year, but, um, because the team, the program is going so well and they're just generating such high numbers on, um, recovering, recovering drugs, recovering firearms, um, arrests, um, we're hoping that we're going to hear the news that it's going to be extended. Um, I know some state funding is not going so well right now. So I, all of us are sitting on the edge of our seat, all of us chiefs that are, uh, uh, participate in this are sitting on the edge of our seats waiting for the BCA to let us know that we're going to go another three years and we got the money to do it. So, um, as of right now, our contract is going to be up next year, but we're hoping that it's, it's going to change.
It'll be up by December of 2026 and then had we hear that.
I think it's going to be June, right, Dan? I, I think it would, I think it goes till June.
Okay.
June of 2026.
Okay.
So.
Good to know. I know that he's been a huge asset, but that's also been a huge asset to our department. So.
Absolutely. And, and he's loving it.
Yeah, I know. I know that too.
He's loving it over there.
Hopefully it get, it gets extended.
Yeah. Yep. And I'll keep you all posted on that as well.
Please.
Yep.
Any other questions? Ron, Ray, or move on?
And then the last item that we have underneath this goal is financial planning. Um, that's been a big initiative, uh, for, from Brian, our city manager and myself. Um, none of it could ever happen without the support of, uh, city council, um, and the great work that each and every one of our department heads, um, does. Um, we've developed and we're maintaining ten-year financial, uh, and CIP plans. We've modified financial policies and we improved the city's financial position. Um, you know, we've modified the fund balance policy. You've seen our bond rating go up, um, which is, uh, which is pretty remarkable for the size of city that we have. Um, and even with the amount of debt that we're carrying, but we've put ourselves in a very good financial position. Um, you've seen, um, where we've continuously tried to implement different programs, um, as far as our infrastructure and our streets, um, and trying to find ways to be able to fund those, um, not just now, but into the future. Um, trying to move ourselves more to a cash basis versus a, a debt basis. So I think we've had a lot of great accomplishments and it, and it really goes, um, to the support that city council has given because obviously, um, it requires us to raise a levy, um, which puts a burden on our taxpayers. Um, but, um, you know, it is something that's absolutely needed within the city. Um, so I'll stand for if there's any questions regarding the financial planning component, um, of the financial stability and cost management goal.
Just that we appreciate that we're going out 10 years. That's huge that we're, I've heard, um, from different cities, Maplewood, they're trying to get out to the, in different cities trying to get out that far. So I'm glad that we have goals, multi-year goals. That does help quite a bit. We know it's going to change, but at least it's on the radar.
Absolutely.
If we're going to move it, we know that there's going to be a cost sometimes.
Yeah. And, and, and we've already had some items that, um, you know, have been discussed and there's going to be, you know, one item that'll be coming in probably about a month in a workshop to city council, and I'll talk about that in a second. But if you remember in our CIP plan, we, we talked about the fire truck that's out there. Is it 2028 or nine or that? And there was some discussion of maybe moving that up, um, earlier than that. Um, and we had the fire chief talk about that. He's done already, um, just the way our fire chief is. Um, he's already been out talking to vendors, trying to find out what's kind of the best deal that he possibly could get at that point, uh, at this point in time. Um, and I think he's getting his, um, at some point in the near future that he'll, um, he's been communicating with the city manager onto it that they'll bring an item and, and maybe request that we move that up for, up sooner than later. If you remember, it was out at, um, 2028 at about $2 million. Um, and he's looking at potentially at, if we move it up earlier, at about a 1.7. Um, and that's part of where that financial planning and we move ourselves to a more cash basis allows us to be able to do some of those components like that and actually save the residents in the long run. Um, another item that we're going to be hearing in a month from, from now, um, is that I think many of you, the city council members are, are well aware, um, that we've had, um, some, some issues with our body cam, um, and, um, our vehicle surveillance, um, components to it. Um, we're currently on a system that, um, is creating a lot of issues and we desperately need to get off of that. Um, our fire, our, our police chief, uh, Ray has, um, spoken with, uh, two vendors, um, and, um, presented some, um, uh, basically you've got demonstrations on both of their systems. Um, and I think the city will be bringing in about a month, uh, kind of the preferred vendor, uh, to do a workshop, um, and to have city council kind of look at that as an option. We threw out to that vendor as a, as a negotiation piece to it. They gave us a proposal, which was much, much, much less than, we'll say, vendor A. Vendor B came in quite considerably, but we threw an option back to them that if we were to, you know, for a five-year contract, if we were to pay everything upfront, would, would we get a reduction in that? And they have come back and said absolutely they'll give a reduction. Again, it's another point that cash can save the city money. Actually their, their, what they would give to us would be better than what we could invest that money today in, in today's rates. And the rates are, are continuously going down right now at this point in time. Um, so it's, it's actually kind of beneficial. How would we be able to afford that? If you remember earlier in one of our budget discussions that we do have a, a debt service fund that was completed, last payment was in, uh, February of this year. And we do have some funds that are left over. Um, it'll be a recommendation from the, the city manager to utilize some of those funds to pay for this, the system and so we can get that going and moving forward. But that item will be coming up, uh, in about a month. I think 18th, is it the 18th of November? Um, that item will be coming. Again, all part of that financial planning and, and, and Mayor, you're absolutely right. The tenure plan is, is always growing. It's, it's dynamic. It's changing all the time. Um, but at least it gives us kind of a footprint of where we're heading and trying to get ourselves in a better planning position, um, because it's going to take a number of years, um, with unfortunately levy increases to get us to where we really need to be. So. And then goal, uh, area number four is the community facilities and public spaces. And the number one priority, and if you remember, it was the number one, um, that was voted on in our work, or in our, uh, retreat. And it's, uh, the finalize the community center resolution. I think right now it's the city council has passed a resolution to not move forward with the existing facility and staff is working on exit plans. Um, we also have the continuation of the student-built housing and we'll ask, and you, and I'll just go through these and then ask any questions and, and we have, uh, department heads here to answer any questions. Uh, continuation of student-built housing. Um, the, the city councils approved that finalized contract with St. Paul College. Um, and then we also have enhancing parks and adding ice ranks and reopening warming houses. Um, and, um, you know, and we'll have Ron speak a little bit. Um, if you remember, uh, Park and Rec Commission didn't have items that were identified for the 2025 in their CIP. Um, they had requested some of them, um, underneath the council member leadership of, uh, council member, um, Schwer, um, that they prioritized a number of items for, for 2025 that the city council had, um, approved. Um, Ron and, and the public works department has taken, um, on a number of those items, um, to make them more attractive and enhancing, uh, more resident participation. And Ron will talk a little bit about that. Before Ron talks about that, do we want to talk about the first two items on the community center, um, or the student-built housing? Um, and I think Brian may give a little bit of update on the last home, the last student-built house.
Yeah. So, uh, the latest up to date for bills that have come through, we are at about, that 213, is that total for bills coming in for that building, for that one? So we're at, uh, just over $213,000 for, uh, the cost that we put into that house. Oh, Chris, you're in last, I see you're standing. So it's a total of a little over $300,000, $400. Um, and it was sold for, uh, 349 and, um, so, or 449, pardon me, yes. And, uh, and you take about 15 out of that for all the closing costs and everything. So, which will be good. There would be some money left over going to the next place and, uh, which will be starting up hopefully shortly. Um, we're getting excavator lined up. Um, and then, uh, the concrete crew's already been lined up, but we just got to get, uh, the finalization on the excavator and then he'll be available probably about two weeks. We're hoping on that. So.
So you're looking at about what, three weeks?
Probably, hopefully two weeks he'll be here to, to start the, the excavation. Yeah. So he'll both dig the basement and then also dig in water sewer for the two units.
Be a groundbreaker?
No, unfortunately it's, it's late in the year at this point. Um, yeah. So, and we historically had not done, uh, groundbreaking. Always have the open house at the end. So, yeah.
Thank you.
And then Ron, I'm going to ask you to kind of talk a little bit about some of those enhancements that you've done in the park this year that came up for 2025? Yeah. So for 2025, um, with, uh, Parks and Rec Commission, uh, I attended a couple of the meetings, kind of, um, get their idea, or I know they had some things that they put in there that we came up with, or Dan came up with some money that we could do. Um, down at, uh, Casey Lake Park, we took out two ball fields back there. Uh, we, um, dug out all the egg line, public works did all this. And then we, uh, I think Randy scrounged up some dirt from a couple of different places that we, we were able to haul in dirt to fill those back in. Um, so those got black dirted, seeded. Uh, we extended the irrigation out there to take care of all that. So we took the pavilions down that were dilapidated out there, um, took out the concrete slabs that were there, uh, black dirted and seeded those. Um, and the last thing really I got to do for that is I got to order some soccer nets that we can put out there. That was per one, uh, the request of the Parks Commission. Can I, can I stop you on that for a second? What was that project estimated through the Park and Rec Commission? I think it was a hundred thousand dollars. And what do you estimate that you've paid to date and then with the soccer nets and that you're planning on? I, I don't know the exact cost of the soccer net yet, but I would say with everything probably under $10,000. And that's, I wanted, I want, I purposefully asked him that question because I wanted it on public record that we actually hear that, you know, we take these, these items and because of the great staff that we have, the leadership and the staff, that we are looking at the most cost-effective way to carry out these projects, uh, for our residents. And so you see something that was at a hundred thousand and, and. Yeah. And I can say that, like I said, our crews worked very hard at, we talked about where we could get dirt each day or where we could get it. We originally thought we could get it mostly from the project and then just the timing of that didn't work out and they didn't have as much dirt as we actually needed. So then we started looking at Facebook Marketplace, at people looking to get rid of dirt. And we ended up finding dirt and hauling it and, uh, you know, doing that. Basically the dirt that we paid for was the black topsoil. So, because we wanted something really nice for that. Um, we, uh, rented a hydro seeder, um, from the company that we buy our, our grass seed from. So we were able to do, to do that. Our crew did that on our own. Uh, we also went out and did a bunch of the stumps that we ground ourselves and hydro seeded those, uh, just to, you know, save money. So we weren't paying for that also. So, um, uh, Gaga Ball Pit, I got, we have all the parts and pieces for that. I ordered a kit for that that we just have to put together. That's back at our shop. Um, we're going to assemble that. Uh, we also have, uh, wind screens for the Housie Park pickleball courts that will be put up. Um, there was a 10, 10-week lead time on that. I just received, I probably received them about three weeks ago. Um, we decided that we'd hold off on putting them up. So we didn't want to put them up, take them down and have them go through winter just for the longevity of that. And then the, there's a playground equipment at Polar Park. That's all going to get replaced. Um, that was ordered. That was a 10 to 14-week lead time. That will get installed also in the spring, but, um, by the time we get it, it'll probably be towards the end of the year. So, um, then were just some of the things that weren't scheduled for 2025 that we got put in and, um, got taken care of. So, anything I missed on there, Cassidy?
No, I think you hit it.
Okay.
I mean, Parks and Rec has something to be proud of for doing something like this this year. I mean, huge improvements, but small costs, I think. So, yeah.
Thank you for your leadership on that commission. So that's what really got it going. So, yeah.
We have a good commission. And it helps. And I, I should, we should add, and I, I want to commend your team, Ron. Um, and really when it comes down to recruiting and hiring the individuals in public works, we are hiring top-notch individuals that can do things that we do not have to outsource for. So that's where we're also saving a lot of money. Same goes for the electric department. I mean, I know that this is under one umbrella that, um, we, we are smart as a city when it comes to staffing because these individuals, um, on their salary, it may cost a little bit more, but it's going to cost us less in the long run. So, hi Jenny, you're doing fantastic and hiring managers, you're doing just as well by finding these candidates.
Very, very true. Any other questions on this one? And then we'll move to goal number five.
I would just request that when it comes to the community center and as we are working on exit plans, that there's just some transparency on where we're at, what does this look like? Um, I know that there's been conversations about the generator and what that looks like to move it and or replace it. Um, so I would like more discussion and possibly a workshop on what are we going to do with the facility? We've decided to move forward with not accepting the funds, but let's move forward with talking about what are we doing with the facility now?
I know you're still looking at numbers is what. We've got, we've got some things that are coming up. So that's good. We can have a workshop. I agree.
Yeah. I mean, it's not, tonight obviously isn't the time to talk about it, but I request a workshop regarding, just an update on that.
Absolutely.
I think goal number five, workforce and organizational development. Um, you know, we, uh, council member Schwer just hit on some, some big key pieces to it, um, that we, we have, uh, a fantastic staff, uh, all the way from top to all the way to every level that's, that's in the organization. Um, going to kind of just, uh, ask for kind of two components to be kind of explained a, a little bit here. I want to give Jenny an opportunity to talk a little bit about, um, what she's been doing. I know she's been in the process and she's been working with the city manager on kind of reviewing our personnel policy. Kind of want her to talk a little bit about that. Um, you know, we've just, uh, recently implemented the, uh, a new payroll HR system, um, which allows us the ability to do a little different postings, um, reach out to individuals, make things more modern, um, instead of a paper-driven system. Um, and, uh, just kind of wanted to have her talk, uh, about that because she's, you know, touches so many different components from health all the way through, you know, every benefit that we have. So if I can give you just, uh, to speak a little bit for us.
Thank you. Um, yeah, it's been great, uh, working with Dan and finance, um, implementing our, uh, HRIS system and payroll system. our HRIS system and payroll system. It's going to benefit both employer and employee on-the-go apps. Open enrollment, we'll be able to do right online, which we'll be doing next week. And as far as our health insurance, we do have some health initiatives that they offer, that, which I know is on here for one of the areas for goals. And they offer up to a thousand dollars per employee to earn per year, and that would be if you're a family member of five, you can earn up to five thousand dollars. Something as simple as walking five thousand steps a day earns you five dollars and twenty-five cents a week, or taking annual physical will get you fifty dollars a week. So a lot of great things happening. The personnel policy is overdue for updates. Been working with Brian and getting that updated. There's a lot of new policies that have come into place since it's been updated. So it's a little bit of a process, but we're getting there, and all great things happening. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And obviously, with the support of city council, and the, the job that our city manager did in the, the last union negotiations, you know, did a market study, I think we gave a very lucrative three-year contract to, to staff, and kept ourselves very competitive in the market. I just want to touch one piece, and I, and I want our electric director, John, to, to talk a little bit. He's kind of developed some strategies to attract and retain staff in his own electric department. I'd like to give him an opportunity to kind of talk a little bit about those.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so recently, we've, I wouldn't say we've had a lot of turnover, but we do have some younger members on our staff. And those guys are very interested in engaging with other communities, and, and going out and helping with storm restoration, and, and getting their hands on things that I think in the past, maybe we didn't, we didn't always engage in, going to like, like we have on here, the, the line worker rodeos. We sent a member of our staff down to Marshall to compete last month. And it's just something that, it kind of leads the way to other guys getting the courage to do stuff like that, and to put themselves out there. It's very intimidating in the trades to, to try and show that you're as good, or if not better than other people at certain things. I think everybody's got this feeling that they have their self-confidence in themselves, but to actually put it on display is a very nerve-wracking thing. So I give them a lot of kudos, and I think it showed a lot of our guys that they could do that type of thing. We also did send guys down to Florida last year for the restoration on Hurricane Milton, which I know we've engaged in mutual aid in the past, but it'd just been something that had been quite a while. And I think we finally have staff members that are willing and able to go do that sort of thing. It has definitely, I think, given those guys a motivation to show up to work and to perform at their best each day. And it also, I think, gives them hope that they have these opportunities to, to continue to do these things. We also, Easton Dale, our superintendent, won a Rising Star Award within the, mm, or the MMUA, sorry, the summer conference. They have a big award presentation. There was five award recipients, and Easton, our superintendent, was one of them. The Rising Star Award was basically just identifying someone that's been within their position for less than five years, and has made a significant impact to their community. He's definitely been somebody that I think stepped up in a time of a lot of change for us. You know, we had Brian moving up, myself moving into my role, and someone in the crew had to fill that position, and it wasn't, it's, it's a lot of responsibility to take on. And, and he, he's taken it with stride, and he's implemented a lot of changes within our crew to keep people safe, and to encourage guys to speak their mind, and, and hone their crafts.
Did he earn it this year?
Yeah.
Did we do anything recognizing him through social media and/or a spotlight for him?
We hadn't, and it's been, depending on the department, I think PD is a good example of that, that some people don't want that information out there. Some people are more sensitive about that. So.
He was in the newsletter.
Okay.
Yep.
And so I think Ava wrote up a little snippet piece on it. There's also in a, MMUA does a publication that all the award recipients are in that as well.
Which I completely understand your point on that as well.
Yeah, I think if he was approached about it, he may be open to it, but I also, he's also definitely a very, doesn't like the spotlight, so.
Yeah.
I can appreciate that, too.
You'll climb up a pole to get away from somebody, what you're saying?
Probably.
And the PD will be there to assist him down. Same with the fire department, yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's kind of.
When you say rodeos, I'm thinking legit rodeo. Is that, okay, sorry.
I, I like that they're called rodeos, because I think it gives that appeal, like people are riding Broncos and stuff. Mostly, it's climbing. They're doing different climbing demonstrations. They do a, like a hurt man rescue.
Okay.
Someone's passed out on the pole, and you're saving them. And then just performing different tasks, like who can do it the most efficiently.
Cool.
And then usually, there's like written test portions to. I'm not sure if this one had, I don't think it did. He didn't win any prizes, but it was definitely a, an eye-opener I think for him.
Sure. Thank you for the clarity of that.
Yeah, of course.
We'll move on to goal number six, sustainability and future planning. And we have a, a number of items that we've got listed underneath that. From funding, building, and facilities, maintenance, create the plan. We've already kind of heard about the financial plan toward there. They're, address the south wood invasive species. There is a plan that's a map of the area that's been developed, and they're developing a comprehensive plan. Introduce incentive-based electric programs, example, time-based EV metering. Planning for connect-in and sustainable development. And then city beautification. Are there, you know, we've got like nine minutes left to the workshop. Is there any of those items you'd like, a little follow-up, a little bit more information from the department head? We'll go to goal number seven, service quality and community engagement. Enhance the city website for clear resident information access. Electrical customer service and community engagement and community events. You know, I, just my own perspective, I think we've done one heck of a great job in, for a city, for an organization in this area. We've updated our, our website. Ava deserves a lot of credit, the event planning, getting people from not only the city of North St., but all over the Twin Cities to attend some of these, these various events. She puts a lot of time in and a lot of effort, and I think it really does put the city of North St. Paul on that map. Well, it's already, always was on the map. It just gives us a little bit more of a recognition. I, I think that that needs to be, you know, recognized. And then, you know, we, you know, we've got an electric department that is continuously looking at different ways to, you know, give opportunities in the environmental arena to, to help out our residents. And they're moving, you know, I think we just, just adopted the EV charging, and the rates, and so forth. So I, I think there's been a lot of, just big excitement in, in the service quality and community engagement. I know personally, I think I've shared this at city council meetings in the past, both the community development front counter staff and the finance counter staff, I truly have never seen customer service to that level. They're very calm, very accommodating, very helpful to any resident that, that comes in. Very pleased in, in seeing how they handle a wide variety of customers and personalities. So I think that the city really does hang on to that service quality as being a, a top one thing, you know, top thing that they really strive for. And I think, again, I think Councilmember Schwer, you know, hit it. I think it really does have, it goes down to who the individuals are that we've hired. And more importantly, and I've seen it changed a great deal, and I'm going to give the credit to the city council and our city manager, the culture of this place has changed greatly. And I think tonight demonstrates that. Where we can sit as department heads and be very comfortable across the way with an elected, a body of elected officials, and have this type of dialogue, and feel comfortable in answering questions, and, and kind of, in certain ways, because most of us here in this room, I know on the department head, do not like to pat ourselves on the back, but for us to try to talk about some of our accomplishments. A lot of that culture change has come with our city manager. He allows us to do our job on a day-in, day-out basis. When we have an issue, that we can bring it forth to him. He'll be supportive of it, and then we can bring it to city council, where again, you have demonstrated time after time, a very supportive nature. So, we do have five minutes left to answer any questions. I wanted to get that in before we were done, because I'm very pleased with the group I call my peers, and, and the group that I look up to every single day, and try to do whatever is necessary to keep this organization that much better, except for Commissioner McKenzie. I knew that was coming.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
First of all, I want to thank all the office, Ron, John, Ray, Jason, all your staff, for all what you guys do. That's amazing. Now Ron just tells us, guys, go to McKenzie's house, you'll find your way. So, no, you guys have put on a great program this summer. It's been great. Now we gotta get the sweepers out and start the streets. When's that coming? When's that coming?
Dan, I appreciate that you led this. This was something that was new for all of us this year, and the transparency to not only the council, but the residents on where we are with this action plan is pretty important. So thank you all for coming here tonight to follow through with where are we with our goals that we put in place, and if we're not there, how are we going to get there? So, thank you for that. Thank you, Brian.
I'll just add that you guys and your staff are really all the face of North St. Paul. So you guys are the ones interacting with the residents day in and day out. So you guys are the ones seeing the goods and the bads of North St. Paul. So anyway, we, I mean, we're just here to help you guys, really. So any way we can help you, you know, that's what our, our job is. So let us know.
For myself, too, the, the people elected us, they put their faith in us. And as the chairman of the board, and the, the council, and we have our faith in Brian running day by day. That's what's nice about this, to be able to see you guys, because, you know, we don't talk to you on a regular basis when there's something that comes up. But, you know, I think we're really good at the, the chain of command here, and city manager does a good job of running, and you guys as the executives, and, and in charge of your departments, definitely. And you talk to your people, too. So I really am glad we did this. Again, we did it for the workshop, and we brought everybody together. And I think a couple times a year, I think it's very important, so we can all get together and have a, a status, and see where we're at, and be able to share the wins with everybody that you have, and be able to, any concerns, be able to, to do that, too. So it's been a, it's been a great meeting. I appreciate it.
Just thank you very much. You are appreciated.
All right. It's right at six-thirty. Call for adjournment. So move, Councilmember Schwer.
Second.
Second, Councilmember McKenzie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's give us five minutes to get ready for the next one. So, six-thirty-five.